All the sections? Motion to table Carrie Segaro.
And let the minutes report that the reason for this is that, we intend to pass it probably next time, but we would like to see two years of building records.
Sure. Mr. Drucker, let Mr. Drucker explain that into the record, which will be filed in a minute. I think that's an excellent point.
The retainer agreement is based on hourly billing and a salary. Money is approved to cover the estimated amount of hourly billings. Before we agree on the proposed amount, I would like to see, because I have not seen it in the past, how things have gone the past couple of years and what the rate of billings has been, what the average amount is, and what we can judge or gauge that based on what we see in the future.
Any other comments on this?
Just that there's no way is this talking negative about Mr. Grossworth's work. It's just that we consider it an appropriate thing to do at this point and maybe it should have been done in a past. Once before, five years ago, I asked for the bills and I was absent from the meeting when they were produced, so.
And that's your chance.
That's your chance to come back.
And Mr. Drucker, I think this is a good idea.
Okay. I think that's, it's an appropriate, you know, self look. Ed, would you take care of the next item, please?
And that would be B, resolve that requisition number 60264, 60265 in the amount of $212,422 as requested by the executive VP, lifelong learning for the course of printing in the helm, the spring 2014 continuing education brochures which promote the college's continuing education courses, workforce development, and credit bearing programs to the community funding source operating budget.
So do I have a motion to consider this item?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second? I say. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Motion carries six zero.
Resolve that requisition G 0037 and G 0046 in the amount of $100,000 as requested by the executive vice president engineering and physics for the creation of 10 custom virtual physics labs. Upgrading the capacity of the physics laboratory will improve students' learning through experimentation and inquiry afforded through the virtual laboratory environment funding source format.
So do I have a motion to consider this item? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Motion carries six zero. Number two, facilities?
Resolve that the rental fee be waived for the use of National Community College facilities by the Lakeview Youth Federation for the 22nd Annual Friendship Games in December 2013 and January 2014 and B, dissolve all associated personnel and make discourse will be borne by the user.
So do I have a motion to consider this?
I sort of.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any objections? Motion carries six zero. Want to introduce that motion?
No, you're doing that.
I'm going to do that, I'm sorry. I'm going to make a motion under Article Four, Section Three, I'm sorry, I read this wrong, of the board's rules of procedure to allow the consideration of an item that does not appear on the calendar. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Any objections? Motion to consider the item carries six zero.
Resolve that the National Community College Board of Trustees accept the donation of the mannequins from the Coach Store of Roswell Field Mall.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any objections? Motion carries six zero. At the last meeting, we had tabled the item on the Presidential Search Committee, but at this time, we're going to open it up for comments. Any comments from the board?
I have a few comments. I have a lot of problems with this thing as it's written. First of all, the history of this college is that the chair of the search committee has always been a trustee. I'm sorry. The chair of this search committee has always been a trustee and this proposed resolution calls for someone who's not a trustee to be the chair. I have a problem with that. Number two, the way some people are getting on this board, you know, the chair shall appoint. The chair shall appoint. The chairman of the board is supposed to be someone who is on the board of the Nassau County Medical Center, whatever it's called now, NUMU, whatever it is.
And George, you're a fair free Russian since I am part of that facility. It is the Nassau Health Care Corporation, also known as New Health, and Nassau University Medical Center, which is the safety net hospital for the county and which saves countless lives, so it is an institution of great importance to the Nassau County.
I don't think he was making a disparage.
No, 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 but I would like to clear the air.
Yeah, but he wasn't making any disparage.
No, no, I understand Tony perfectly, but that was a plug for the hospital.
Okay, well.
Take it, Tony. We're going with the commercial now.
And we have, we have someone on the hospital board that you know and you're friendly with, and that's, and he's a great guy, by the way, Paul Leventhal. So my first objection, George, what do you want to do here? Have government by el jefe, by, by, by the boards?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to go ahead and pick this committee and sort of it's, it's, it's your gang? That's, that's the appearance that I'm getting. Now, it may be wrong, all right, but that's the appearance I'm getting. And I think when we come to appointing.
I'm sorry, Tony, board, the members of the SCCFT and the AFA and the CSEA, were those members of my gang. What we did was we took a look at the Presidential Search Committee, the previous two attempts to obtain a president. And what we did is we laid out a template and the template was basically just that. It was a template so that we could be brought to the board as a point of discussion. Okay? So it was not a fait accompli. It was basically something for us to be able to discuss as a board. Now, your, your iconic remark about having someone who's always been a member of the board being the chair possibly is true, but doesn't mean that it's written in stone. Paul Leventhal, I considered only because he's well respected by the faculty, was an ex-trustee, is well respected in the community, and I thought he would be a welcome addition to the search committee. So that was, it was a point of open discussion, but never was it ever set as the jefe, which is not my title.
Oh, you know what I mean. Now, it's not the old thin skin, George. Don't play the thin skin with me now. You can do it once, I'll smile, I'll laugh. Don't keep on doing it.
I'm sorry, Tony, don't raise your blood pressure.
Well, I'm not worried about my blood pressure.
Well, then the tone of your voice would just be.
I think, I think what Tony is referred to is that it's already a resolution on the minutes tonight when you indicated that it was something that you thought. You thought that Paul Leventhal would be appropriate to be on it and it appears on the, on the minutes, on the agenda tonight as if it's almost like a foregone conclusion, even though you're saying it's up for discussion. Sometimes when items get already put in the form of a resolution, it's kind of very easy to be swept from the momentum of it, like a wave. And I think that's what Tony is objecting to, that perhaps.
But it was never meant to be that way. And one of the things that we ought to do.
George, I think it was because that's how the Personnel Committee got it. As a matter of fact, there was an amendment made at the Personnel Committee where it talked about ungraded representative and it was changed by yourself and Ms. Weiss to the ungraded administrator would be appointed by the chair. And this resolution has that language and the, and, and the chair will appoint the community representative. I mean, it, it sounds like you're trying to have a one man show, whether it's good intention or not good intention, this is a board, it's supposed to act as a board.
Tony, I, again, that was something that I said that at the level of the board, I'd be very happy to discuss, and I did not really care who came in from the administration point, whether it was ungraded or field or whatever title you wish to use, since I don't really have much exposure to the administrative level here, that was something that would be open for discussion with the board.
I think Tony would just like the language to be chaired, to be chosen by the board rather than the chair of the board.
And what about the Long Island Association, for example? A representative from that group, the leading business organization for this area. I guess someone from the business community on who may be of some help to this college.
Tony, you did seem, when we had the, the last Presidential Search Committee and Chairman Prime appointed the community representative, you were not vociferous, in fact, you made no comment whatsoever about his choice of a community representative. Why now? What happened? What's different? Is it because I'm in charge? Or is it I'm chair?
No, 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 no. There you go now, you've got your thin skin working up again, George.
No, it's no thin skin. I just want to know what the difference is.
But if you keep on doing it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr., no, 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 Mr., Mr. Pranachio.
Call me Tony. George, George, call me Tony.
Mr. Pranachio, at this point in time, I take reproach because there is a difference, and you're going to have to point out to me, the difference between Chairman Prime and myself, as to why each of us could have had a community representative as an appointee.
Selected by the board, that's how.
What board proceeds, that's how you're going to argue.
You're talking about Ms. Laura Kern and she's selected by the board.
No, she was not selected by the board. It was selected by Chairman Prime and I was present at all those meetings.
Select the board minutes.
I don't have to. I have my memory.
And you weren't present at all the board minutes, but most times you get sort of at seven thirty or eight. But that's not the point. Let's not go into the history. Let's talk about what we should be doing now.
We should always look at history, Tony, because if we don't, we're always doomed to repeat failures.
Right, so we should have a member of the board as the chair of this committee. You're absolutely right.
No, sir, I think that history has shown that the last two presidential searches have not been quite successful. I think that we need to think outside the box and do it different.
Yeah, but it wasn't because there was a member of the board who was.
I have no, I'm not saying it was or wasn't. I'm just saying I think that we need to do things different.
Well, you are going to do things different, but you're going to be more inclusive in your membership.
And that's what we have.
But that has nothing to do with, but that has nothing to do with who should chair the committee, is what you're saying.
Well, again, I think that that is something that at the level of the board, the board should discuss and approve. I'm not saying that it is my decision, it is a board decision after board discussion.
When your resolution says the chair, the chair will appoint, the chair will appoint.
Correct.
That's what the resolution says. You're asking this board, you put before this board a resolution that says you will select the ungraded administrator and you will select the, the member of the community at large. That's what this resolution says. Am I misreading something here? Is it my glasses? Is it my eyes? Is it my brain? I think I'm on, I think I'm on fair ground here. Isn't what it says, that's my job.
It said, "That committee shall be composed of the following members." Didn't say it was, it didn't say it was appointed by me neither, as it said that it's been approved. This is a template.
The representative of the ungraded administrator to be chosen by the chair of the NCC board.
And that could be changed. That, I told you, that could be amended by the board.
I'm not saying it should be changed.
That's fine. And I'm not in disagreement with you. I'm not disagreeing with you on that.
Again, I'm also saying that, that it's great to have one on the board, and I think it's really great to have Tony on the board, but I'm the senior trustee here and I think I should be on the board. I think it's the powers who give great service on it, I should make it, should be on the board too. There were four trustees.
So, oh, we'll just, Mr. Drucker and Ms. Strachan are going to be thrown off the board debate group for.
Keep him on.
I'm sorry?
Keep him on, I said.
No, sir, we have a limitation as to the size as for the SUNY requirements. So we have to deal with practicality.
We don't have a limitation to size.
You know what? We need, we need to have practicality. And the practicality was that the A-Strab search committee was improperly large and was not effective.
But that's different than saying that we have, we have a limitation. You're just saying that it was deemed inappropriate, it was deemed too large, but it's not, it was not a, a foregone rule, but it's limited, right? Correct. You're, you're interpreting that as, as that was the, the feeling that was too large.
Again, I think that that is something that at the level of the board can be discussed.
That's why we're bringing you up.
That's fine.
And, and Mary Adams, who is the veteran board member, has said a number of times at meetings, let everybody on, the larger the committee, the better. Let every group on. The problem with the last committee was I was chair and as I said at the last meeting, I tend to be the type of person who doesn't, I don't know how to delegate, all right? And that's why I couldn't handle a large committee. A different type of person as chair, Mr. Drucker, could handle it. And that's, that's what I have to say. Mr. Powers, would you have anything to want to say?
Well, I was just concerned when the, the first time I saw a resolution was, when I came to, when I received the packet at home, there was no previous discussion amongst the board as a whole. Of course, that concerns me, irregardless of having individual names already named, having individuals who will name other individuals. We did not have a full board discussion on how we were going to make up this Presidential Search Committee if we moved forward on it. And I would assume that you would want some input from previous search committee members on what worked and what didn't work.
I am sure that the members of the committee that are appointed would be of sufficient scope and expertise, that they would be able to navigate these waters on their own, not having to rely on past experience. And I think looking at this in a fresh and new perspective would be more inviting.
Ideally, ideally, that makes a lot of sense, but if, for example, hypothetically, if I were on the search committee, I would find Tony's experience to be invaluable to me personally, if I were going to be involved in this search committee at a great extent. So someone like Ed, someone like Tony, personally, in my opinion, I would find their, their experience invaluable. I would love to have them on the committee with me.
I don't believe it's, you know, and I understand a clean slate, but I don't believe it's clean slate or 100% the past because experience is the teacher and you have an institutional memory and there are, some of the warehouses here are based on what we've done as an institution before, so a confluence of the clean slate and the experience would give us a better chance of being successful because unfortunately, we have not been successful. And we need to have permanent leadership at this college because a lot of other issues are not going to be solved until we have permanent leadership at this college.
The point is well understood and we'll take it. I don't think that the committee will be brutalist, there will be other members of the committee that have been experienced, that have already been, will be on there, that have served on previous experience. I think this is a time for new members of the board to come. I have, they have enough life experiences to be able to navigate these waters, they will have enough support services to be able to put them through. Your points are well taken and again, can be open for discussion at the level of the board.
It was hard to see that relatedly, very relatedly, you sent out a message to all campus groups asking if they would be interested in joining the search committee and to notify Ann Brandy if they were. I would suspect, I would hope, I would demand that whoever replies, that every member of the board gets a copy of that reply so we know what's going on.
Absolutely.
So, because we don't want to have a one man show, that's not a good thing. The other thing is, when talking about administrator, ungraded administrators, first of all, if you're going to have representatives of the ungraded administrators, they should elect who's going to be their representative. I don't even think this board should appoint the ungraded administrator. If we recognize that the 60th and 70th ungraded administrators are a force within this community and should be represented on this search committee, then let those ungraded administrators decide who their representative is going to be. We wouldn't think of telling the NCCFT who would do it. Look at that. Or any other college group, who's going to represent them. And why do it with the ungraded administrators? And I had this petition from, signed by some three hundredured teachers, or at least employees of the college, and I think some of the points here are well taken. I don't have to comment on them, you all have it, you can all read it. So we, I think we have to have some real discussion next time on this and I look forward to the next time.
Sound check. Any other comments? Okay, let's move to the reported act of the president.
Good evening. I just want to bring to your attention because between now and the next board meeting, a number of events will occur. We will be initiating the Holiday Card Initiative, which comes out every year. Letters will be going out on November 22nd. Foundation has initiated a new initiative to raise money for the football team and they've been approached by other athletic teams to work with them in raising money for their respective clubs, so that's beginning as well. On December the 12th, it will be the president's award ceremony, which is a ceremony for students who have been awarded scholarships for outstanding academic performance, and we invite you all to attend that event as well. We are also in the midst of an annual appeal campaign that was started in October and will continue for some time to come. I am sure that many of you will receive letters asking you to make donations. I ask that you give that serious consideration. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to wish all of you a very enjoyable Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will proceed now to the speaker's list. Mr. Boyd, you were up first. Mr. Powers, would you be kind enough to run the three minute clock for us?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Dr. Garden. Good evening. I hope everybody's doing well. My name's Ed Boyd, and I'm chair of the Academic Senate, and I just have, I probably won't even take half of my time. I would like to urge you all to move forward with the Presidential Search as expeditiously as you can because as Mr. Powers said, this college needs permanent leadership. We have a lot of challenges facing us and in putting together the search committee, I urge you also to have an eye towards openness and inclusion and transparency, to ensure that the search committee is as broadly representative of the various campus constituent groups as is possible. That, I think, is important. I also would like to remind you that at the last board meeting, I presented a resolution by the Academic Senate on the Presidential Search, which I read probably too quickly, but that's just me, and I want to remind you of that resolution and also ask if you could prepare us a written response to the points we raised in it. And finally, I would like to join Dr. Saunders in wishing everybody a very happy and joyful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Pagan, please. She doesn't appear to be here. Okay. Jason Moore.
I just want to read the petitions that perhaps it could be entered in the minutes. You already have a digital copy, so I'll phase through it. I don't think I'll use a full one. With the undersigned area of Nassau Community College to choose a Presidential Search Committee that will fairly represent the college community, properly bound search committee will promote confidence in the next Nassau Community College president, therefore we recommend the following. Number one, Presidential Search Committee must adhere to guidelines, sorry, search guidelines of SUNY, the American Association of University Professors, and the Association of Governing Boards. Two, a trustee is who is a voting member of the Board of Trustees and on the proposed Presidential Search Committee must be appointed as chair. Chair should have an ongoing and direct connection to the NCC community. Three, the community member must be determined by his or her distinguished community service record and chosen by the entire Board of Trustees. Four, no administrator should be a voting member of the Presidential Search Committee. The AAUP advises administrators do not serve on Presidential Search Committees and SUNY warns of potential problems with the chief executive applies. Five, a cross section of campus constituent groups must be considered and permitted to participate. Each group should choose their own representative. Six, if a trustee emeritus serves on the Presidential Search Committee based on his or her title of trustee emeritus, he or she should not be appointed or elected as an officer such as a chair or secretary, nor should he or she be permitted to vote. All appointments to the board, I'm sorry, all appointments to the Presidential Search Committee must be vetted and approved by the entire Board of Trustees. I have a note, 1.7, a brief clarification, number seven, intends to convey that the groups chosen to be on the Presidential Search Committee must be agreed to by the board as a whole, while still permitting each chosen group to designate their representative, and that no individual appointment be made solely by the chair or the board of trustees. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Michael Boyle.
I was ready to react to a few seconds of Ed Boyd's time, I might go over by just about 10 seconds.
We'll count for the 10.
Okay. My name is Michael Boyle. I'm a full professor at Nassau Community College in the Theater and Dance Department in my 29th year. I have a BA in Theater from SUNY Plattsburgh and an MFA in Technical Design and Production from the Yale Drama School. Many faculty in my department, both full and part time, were educated within SUNY and then received advanced degrees from prestigious schools. We are a well-educated faculty, as is the rest of the college. As you continue to negotiate contracts with us, I want you to remember that we bring a diverse, well-rounded education, professionalism, and expertise to our classrooms, advisement centers, departments, laboratories, presentations, committee work, et cetera. The valued education that our students receive is a direct and unambiguous result of our commitment to them in every way. I trust you will acknowledge our contribution through continued meaningful negotiations with our unions. I signed the petition for a fair Presidential Search Committee because it spells out some of the essential problems with this impending do-over. If indeed we accept the premise that the last search was tainted, an unproven accusation at best, and a political coup at worst, then it is certainly incumbent on the board and the constituencies it represents to get it right this time. As I looked back at the Board of Trustees' special meeting, May 30th, with Vice Chancellor Joanna Duncan-Potier, I was again struck by her recollection of the start of this process, her meeting with Jeffrey Prime, where she offered to assist in securing an outside interim president, and that the board declined her offer. It starts about 62 minutes into the video. I have to wonder if that is not where it all went wrong, and although she waffles later on the strength of that suggestion, she seems, seems to say that many institutions have gone that way and that it remains a common practice. What is it I would like to see, or rather need to see, a process that is completely transparent and without compromise? We are not there yet. As how appointments have been made is unclear to me, and there is an incomplete vetting of the trustee emeritus, both as to convey status and the need to reveal any prior or extant relationships. I need to see a process that is fair to those who work here for the benefit of our students, fair to administrators and faculty, so that no undue pressure or benefit can be exerted to influence an outcome. This can't happen while the chief executive or acting president can continue in that title and also be a candidate. And I need to see a process that is fair to all candidates, particularly those becoming finalists and in danger of losing their jobs, where if we are to get the best possible leader, one who believes in shared governance, the benefits of a liberal arts education, as well as the pursuit of career, someone who understands that we must truly and generally educate the population for the good of the nation, then this do-over must adhere to the highest standards as outlined fully by both the SUNY Guidelines for Presidential Searches for Community Colleges, Appendix A, and the mountain of information available from the Association of Governing Boards on best practice, likely pitfalls, and the role of the trustee emeritus designation and the support of the board's mission. I strongly support the message contained within the petition you have received and hope this search, this time, through its respect of transparency and integrity of process restores the faith and trust of the community we all serve, the faculty, staff, and administrators that labor here, and most importantly, the students of this institution. Thank you.
Susan, it is 59. Perfect.
He's a professor of theater arts.
Very good. Good time in his life.
Susan Kushman, please.
Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. This is my first time speaking and I'm happy to be here. I'm following up on the letter that the Jewish Studies Program submitted on October 21st to the board and to Dr. Garden, and I teach in the Department of English, by the way, and I am the new coordinator of the Jewish Studies Project. We want to just follow up and respectfully request that you consider a representative from the Jewish Studies Project to be included on, as a representative for the Presidential Search Committee. Given that we do have a significant Jewish studies, a Jewish faculty, students, and staff, as well as a growing Jewish population in Nassau County, it would seem a beneficial decision for all concerned and for our future enrollment at Nassau Community College. Our concerns include but aren't limited to offering kosher food in the cafeteria, awareness of the two-day Rosh Hashanah holiday on the calendar, and most importantly, recent incidents of antisemitism that have come to my attention on campus. So for all of these reasons, we do respectfully ask that you consider a representative from our campus constituency on the Presidential Search Committee. Thank you.
Phyllis Carlin.
Thank you very much. I want to second what Professor Kushman just said and tell you that the Jewish population in Nassau County over the last 10 years has grown at a greater rate than the population in general of Nassau County, particularly among the religious Jews, you know, and that is from UJA Studies and also census data, and this is a population that can be attracted to this. to this college, but not if the college is perceived as insensitive to Jewish concerns. And I think that it is important, not only for those of us who work here, but for our future students who could come here and the growth of the college, to have a president that is sensitive and understanding Jewish issues, and that is why the Jewish Studies faculty request to have a seat on the search committee. Now, I just have a thought, because you're talking all about community representatives and who appoints whom and things like that, and it occurs to me that you are community representatives. You, the trustees, are appointed as community representatives, and you are all appointed politically. None of you is here without being appointed by either a Republican or a Democrat or governor or county executive. You are political, and you are community representatives. So, why do we need to have on a search committee representatives who are politicians, representatives of the county executive, of the Democratic majority, of the, or the, I should say, the Democrat minority now, and the Republican minority? Why do we need a community representative? The last community representative is a politician and ended up running and getting elected to the county legislature. You are those people, and if you are those people, that would make more room on the committee for representatives of groups on this campus and perhaps even more students on the committee. And then you would have room for everybody, you could solve that problem, and perhaps remove some political influence from the college. You are those people. You should be the representatives of the community, you should be the representatives of your sponsors and of the county Republicans and of the county Democrats. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to turn this around a little bit. Tonight is presidential search, presidential search, and I'm up here because I have a contract to negotiate, and I feel that that contract, I have two more sessions that are on the calendar to get the contract, we have an expired contract, and I just want the members of the board, I know there's four individuals who are not here tonight, to realize that we worked for 18 months to get a contract extension, it fell apart. We've been working since May to get a contract in place, and although I definitely want to move forward with the presidential search, I'd like to see some attention also given to this negotiation that's in place. I have two more dates, one this Thursday, that's coming up for three hours, and one again on December 2nd, and we were more or less assured that we were going to try to get something done by the end of the semester, and that's still my hope and my expectation, that that can happen, to stabilize this, to work for our students and for the community. So, I thank you, but I want to bring that to your attention.
The board shares in that opinion as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Shel Cohen?
I don't know how that happens, but it's the last one. Can't get that one out there. Must be a straight thing. Shel Cohen, professor of psychology, if you're here. Longer than most. Welcome to the new trustee. We started off with this presidential search. We came up with two candidates, and if there was anything wrong with that search, why in the world didn't Chancellor Zimfer spell out what it was? She just said she didn't like it. And Dr. Garden said, well, okay, we ought to do a search that will get rid of the objections. But you can't do one that gets rid of the objections if you don't know what the objections are. There are questions about the appointment of a new trustee, why do we need it, and what role that person will play. I think you really wanted to have this look totally above board. I'm really concerned that this may not come off looking like that, and instead of you accomplishing what your goal was, Dr. Garden, that you are, in a sense, contaminating it.
Well, we hope not, Shel.
Well, I just had to say that because I'm really concerned. The last thing I want to see is that somebody says, oh, there was something wrong here about the way someone was appointed, or what relationships they have with other people, or whatever, and then it becomes tainted again, and we have another do-over. And we can't afford that.
One of the things that, hopefully, I don't know if you were here at the time when we, when Mr. Cronace was talking, what we did was put up a template, and this is still, there's nothing written, this is up for board discussion and taking input from the faculty. I don't know if you saw the email I sent out last week, trying to get input from every group that wants to be represented on board. We have a constraint of how big this can be. There's a certain number of people that can be on it, and we will sit down at the level of the board and try to come up with best consensus for that. So, in no way, shape, or form do you, you know, I want anybody to think that this is being hijacked or moved. This is basically a template for open discussion at the level of the board. And one of the things that we looked at, Tony actually made an excellent suggestion tonight, at the level of the ungraded administrators, let them choose. That's fine. If we have four positions that are on for student groups or faculty groups, okay, let the faculty groups decide who will be, who will set up the committee. No one on this board wants to make that decision. I'd rather let you guys do that decision. This is open, this has always been about communication, okay? What I did is I set out a template to discuss, not a template written in stone, I did not come down off the mountain with two stone tablets. I came down with a piece of paper with things written on it, and the good thing about paper is you can put lines through it, and you can cross it out, and you can make it, and it has to be something of consensus, because this, as I have said before, is a community. And one of the things I think that we've done better is communicated better, and again, I do not want that to go forward. That's why we're now moving on this. Right now, this has gone back out to the campus. We need for campus input.
I think one of the objections to Chancellor Zimfer, and can be argued vehemently against it, but one of the objections that is known is that they felt that the committee was not diverse enough, needed to be more inclusive, and that's one of the, perhaps, our perceived mistakes that we're going to try to rectify this time around.
And that's why African-American. No, 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 no. Affirmative action person, and the rest of the group voted for a woman. So, you tell me where the possible, you know, lack of diversified input.
You mean that in the last search, in the last search committee?
Yeah.
Well, it was said there was. And in fact, the process.
So, what's the objection?
There was no objection. That last process went through to the level of the board. The fact that none of the two finalists got the approval of the board had nothing to do with the search committee, it just had to do that, you know, the board decided that neither of those two finalists were good enough to put forward. That was it. It had nothing to do with the integrity of the search committee or any of the process.
We also lacked a number, we lacked a necessary votes that night.
That's right, I was here at that time. But I don't know why the search committee then, you know, if that was the problem, that nobody liked the two candidates, why couldn't the same search committee go on? This is truly a do-over. And one thing I'm missing, and maybe you haven't spoken to this issue, but, because you guys have used up my minutes, you know.
It's our fault. Unless I am prevented by the rest of the board, I'll use chairman's prerogative.
Okay. Why did we need another trustee?
What do you mean, why did we need another trustee? Where?
Why do we have a trustee emeritus?
Why do we have a trustee emeritus?
What was the matter with the board as a constituent?
There was nothing to do with the board as a constituent. At the time, this is, it was open, and the reason I thought it would be great to have someone who was outside of the board.
I'm sorry, what was open?
I'm sorry?
What was open?
The thought of having.
The thought of the committee, the committee is nebulous right now. There's nothing written. This was a template idea to discuss, and one of the things I tried to do was, what would be different? One of the things that was different was to bring in someone who had a connection to the college, who was still very interested in the college, but was from the outside, that had a keen interest on the college going forward. Trustee Emeritus O'Leary Ball was a highly valued member of the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees, well-respected by the NCCFT and the AFA, got along well with everyone. And there were no objections, and I thought that would be a wonderful addition to the board. Gives it just a little bit of new life and a new perspective. So, this is all about thinking outside the box and trying to come up with an original idea. And again, an original idea, open for discussion.
I just don't want to be, to have this seen in some kind of negative light, especially in terms of the possibility that what's going on is really stacking the deck.
I don't see how.
We, as members of the board, are all sensitive to stacking of the deck, as you may, well, you came in late tonight, so you probably missed out on some of the more colorful comments that may here, but we're all sensitive to so-called stacking the deck, and we are not going to let that happen.
Don't believe everything you read, just because it's written. That doesn't mean it was an artist, this resolution. Just because it was presented to the board doesn't mean that's what was supposed to be passed.
Tony, luckily, I listened to what you mean and after what you said.
I didn't want to be part of this. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. The first thing I want to say is I wish to all in the Nassau Community College family a very wonderful, happy Thanksgiving. Be shared well with your families and your friends. The next Friday, NSCAP's meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 17th, 2013, 10:00 PM, followed by the full board. The board will open the public session at 6:30 PM, as followed the Zoom public session at approximately 8:00 PM. I request a motion for adjourned meeting. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Whoever said that, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion carries 6-0, non-abstainable. Meeting, 8:30.